First, we're going to open up the September 14th workshop meeting here. And let's get right to it. We've got a busy agenda. I've added a few things on my copy to discuss, but we'll focus in on the first three. The first one was the historic district. Michelle provided everyone, the first two pages on top of your packet there is on the historic overlay zone as well as the information that's in our planning, I guess that would be in our code, our planning code. And I guess one of the reasons for bringing this up is that I believe that we've created another layer of, how do I want to put it?
Hierarchies.
I guess that's the right way to say it.
That's a good word.
We have created another layer which I believe that we could possibly tweak this or maybe eliminate this district. And I thought of just some discussions from my standpoint. First of all, it says the local jurisdiction may create a historic district commission or a historic preservation commission. This was actually started when I served as mayor the first time. It was brought to us, we accepted it, we never appointed anyone to the commission. And then when Mayor Fasona came in, he appointed people to the commission and then we had our historic district. I believe that there's value in maintaining our historic values of existing buildings, but I guess where I'd like to see maybe we tweak it is either we give the authority to our planning commission so that when the planning commission is meeting, they could also meet as the historic board if they meet the requirements. And when you look at the requirements that this historic committee is, or what it's requesting is that you have to be a pretty educated person to be on this board. And trying to find members for this board that live within the overlay district is impossible for us to find. Now, they don't have to be within that district to be a member. In fact, the other night, we appointed a person that lived in northeast onto the board, which is allowed by this ordinance, or by this committee. The problem I have with this is that we have an area here that we're allowing people from outside that kind of direct what we're doing within our own historic overlay district. I feel like it should be the people that live in the district making those decisions for themselves. So I'm, you know, I'm going back and forth with this thing. I'm giving you some pros and some cons here. I believe that there's value in historic district, but I don't believe that there's value in having an overlay district. I think maybe we could take a look at and see if we can designate certain buildings and say, this property is historic, this falls under this window. This building next to it, which was, has 1965 windows in it and siding that was put on in 1985, why do they have to pay additional money to come in to put a sign up? Right? Because they're in the overlay zone. These are the issues that I have with it, and it just seems like it takes, takes more time than the value of it is. But I want to preserve the old, so how do we do that?
So, we're going to talk about getting rid of the commission or the overlay or both?
Well, I guess I'm going to say, if we get rid of the overlay district, then what, how do we prevent someone from doing damage to an old historic building?
Or tearing it down.
Or tearing it down.
And how does this affect them in any way if they don't have this, overnight?
You know, it's, do you know?
Well, it's questionable because when this first got questioned, the historic district, and I wish Gene was here to say that. But the state saw the district had a whole nother plan than the town did. And the state's district actually included where they already tore down properties on High Street by the hospital cavers. So, but no one was aware because nothing was actually in place. You know, I see it as the town center. You want to keep that quaint feeling, but you don't want, like you're saying, when the Elton Center, which was a 1950's building, had to, it ended up turning out to be absolutely beautiful with the brick and the work that was done, totally different from the metal facade. But they're going through, for a grant perhaps, you said funding, they're going, say, to the planning commission, then the grant's going to the Maryland Historic Trust. They're approving it, and then they're going back to the historic group to say, is the sign okay? So there's so many different layers that they're going through. I honestly think it should be something where we designate historic properties, possibly by the age of the building, within the town center. So you are preserving them and keeping them to the way, you know, you want them to look. And can it be put in our code already for the planning commission to look at? Would be, I guess, the question for Gene or?
I'm not for it if you can get them to move forward because you have to work out the kinks.
There's a lot of kinks in this and.
I always ask, first of all, we look at, like you say, the qualifications to be on this board. So it won't be so tight to get involved with this board. You know, you talk about educating, I mean, you can have education, but it's just that, not the education, but the history for someone to be on the board that has history with this type of field of work. As far as being an architect and all that stuff, not everybody's qualified to be that. But I'm just, you know, a friend out there. As an example, someone with a little bit of knowledge about something. I would love to have the inside of the town of Elton be involved. These changes, not somebody outside, I agree with that. But as far as the qualification, I think we need to look at if we can change that first. Who can be on the board and who we, one on the board, we can't get them anyway, so lessen that a little bit. So it will be someone that can continue on there.
Keep the historic commission, is that what you're saying?
Well, what we're finding is, is that you have this language and then you have the language that we drew up. And it says that they have to be in accordance with minimum professional requirements in United States Department of Interior for certifying local governments under 36C and R Part 61. And that's when it comes in and tells you that you have to have these qualifications.
Right.
And it's not, it's not really us saying it's the, I think the state or the Department of Planning.
That's a good federal regulation.
And now we've got the, I would like to say, I guess, I'm okay with the historic committee, but I'm not okay with taking the whole district. I would like, and I know that they just went through a study where one of the comments in the study said that we could take the particular buildings. So for example, the Hermitage, without question, is a building that you want to always maintain and preserve. The Mitchell House is one that you always want to maintain and preserve. So we have to determine what era that we're looking at here that we want preserved because there's, we've got a lot of eras here in Elton.
Yeah, so we get older and they get.
And that's right. And a lot of this is playing on me because I'll tell you, when we shot the video, we did the, I've got a feeling video. There was a lot of young people down there that day that we met with. And there was young kids from Elton High School, and I went up and I was shaking their hands, and they said, Mayor, you've got a great little town here. And they're part of the town, but they said, you know, it looks too old. So think about that. Now, this is the perspective of the younger group. And listen, it's the younger group that's going to be in charge of this community for many, many, many years to come. But I do believe that we need to not lock ourselves in so tightly with these regulations that we can't grow, let me put it this way. This committee, if you wanted to put windows in a building on Main Street, you have to go in front of this committee. And you have to pay that committee a fee to go in front of this instead of just going into the building inspector's office and getting your permit. Right? Anywhere in this district, is that correct, Chip, in San Antonio?
Yeah, when he did it on High Street, the house next to the barber shop, he had to come fund the historic district commission and replace the windows.
I agree.
We've caused ourselves, I think, another layer because we've included a whole district. And I, give it some thought and maybe we can come up with a solution on maybe identifying properties instead of a district. Our district would be this district with these buildings.
I don't feel qualified to come up with ideas, but I feel very compelled to say to let our staff move forward the way it's letting it still be. Let them get together and say this is what we need to do and then make a recommendation.
So I'm throwing the planning board in our place, but the zoning, wouldn't that be the person that would make the decision? Well, through the historic board.
Well, they go up to historic board is making these decisions, right?
But I think Gene is, Gene is there at the historic commission as well.
Either Gene or I go to the meetings.
I would like to invite, you know, we need to have a joint meeting with the planning board and the historic overlay board, historic committee. Yes, Terry?
I know the historic commission, the board is changing, but the previous five that have been, had sat on it for quite several years have brought it up a number of times that they thought that it was too broad an area and that the same thing with potentially naming specific buildings or, like you mentioned, a cutoff date, you know, where anything built after this date, even if it falls within there, still does not have to come to the historic district. Because there's a lot of residential that's currently in the historic district that has been remodeled several times since it was originally built. It's not like, as Mark Clark used to point out, it's not like Just Peak City where the original fabric is still there.
What year was your mother's house built? On, she's in the historic district, so she wanted to replace siding or windows. I know it's not, but she would have to pay a fee to get it done. That's what I'm saying. She's in the district and that is not a historic.
Why back those houses and crews without going through all the red tape?
So I think for, Mr. Lemon, you had a comment.
I sort of tie into what Earl was saying. Your theme is make it easy and keep it simple. And that's where you should go with that. But the other way to look at this is that there's nobody around, particularly in this room, that can identify what is historical value. So it seemed to me that you need to have available to you or have somebody go through town and identify what, you know. I learned this when I closed my aunt's estate back in 84. I had somebody, an auctioneer come through. They look at furniture, didn't mean a thing to me, but they really impressed me with their knowledge. You know, this period, that period, that's a piece of junk, that kind of stuff. And I think the same is true of what you're doing. I'm going to repeat, I agree with the theme that you have, keep it simple and make it easy. But I think you need.
We need an expert to tell us what properties.
Maybe you need somebody to go through the town here and look at stuff and say, this is what, you know, this is what you really need to preserve and keep of value and sort of keep the way it always has been, and the rest of this stuff, forget it.
Yeah. We definitely have to keep those, the linchpins of our community. But I think that, I think that's what we'll do then, Luke. And we, maybe, maybe we'll schedule a meeting with, and I think Paula would be a great one we could schedule with. We'll get Paula, Gene, and maybe Mike Dixon, and we'll take a tour through the historic district. And let's identify the ones that have such a significance to our community and.
Well, I think the first thing you need to schedule is to sit down with them and talk to them about what you want to do.
Okay.
If you don't want to just show what else are riding around because there might be a lot of stuff to do with research at a time. There's got to be a good one to have one of you, Debbie.
I just think it needs to be, be a little tighter than, than as loose as it is for the whole area.
You appointed the attorney for that, for the meeting since that. Seeing them struggle with the issues that you guys are pressing on with. I saw, for a minute I thought they were going to turn down the demolition of a building that hadn't had to be abandoned, rebuilt. I could have heard a couple difference in the drawings of the old one and the new one. It wasn't qualified to compare, it was past. Try to wrestle with either historic or architectural significance. And on the other hand, this notion that Elton looks like Elton and even though there may be buildings of lesser historic significance, you still get that flavor when you drive down town. It's one that pointed out that's why people come and say they look at them on the streets like that. It's not why people are coming. My son lives outside of Atlanta and go to Marietta and Eastside, Georgia, and places like that. It hasn't worn them down, it's really reminded them of it. But they, and I looked at my folks, oh my God. Because a lot of these buildings are not economically viable. You would need to do some, you know, recombination of that, you might not consistently work this, even though it's more expensive.
That's correct.
And, you know, I think that is a stumbling block somewhat to rebuild.
That happened at one time, there was someone who wanted to purchase a building and he wanted to do a block glass top on it. Years ago, and you, what we go with the historic town.
One of these types of buildings is redoing these buildings with primarily retail and pubs, retail, restaurants, things like that on the first floor. And then higher end condos and apartments, that sort of thing above. And people who live there are nice, nice big, you know, and then they walk just places they're used to. They're not quite attracted to being in the land, staying in their home, in the small houses, the small houses really.
Well, we have a lot of buildings that they'll tell you that you can't do anything with the second, third, fourth. It's not feasible. But yet if you could, if it wasn't, and these buildings aren't historical significance, but they could remove and replace with a new model, I think it could go a long way. Well, we know what we're doing. Thanks, Luke.
Do you want to see if these people will come to a workshop to talk to the board?
Yes, that'd be great.
That's what I'm saying, workshop.
Yeah, see if they'll come to the workshop and if we have to change our time to.
He'll be mad, I would say, because.
I think Paul is retired.
Yeah, they might be, we'll find out.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is signage in the town center zoning. Is that what we were kind of talking about?
It kind of is, it falls in, but it also falls in on the side of the, size of the sign. I'm glad Chip's here. I thought the, what's it, 2.5 for the town center signage or?
There's a lot of.
Per side, there's a lot of way to interpret what's in the book.
When the town center was created, it created a whole list of sign stuff. Because when it was C1, it was total sign, it's not C, 10 square feet of area. It reached 10 linear feet of sign frontage, and that's about it. Now we've got three pages of stuff.
Okay.
And it is pretty restricted.
Yeah.
Which one?
Something about, I think Gene was saying, 2.5 on each side or something.
For what type of sign?
For a sign that comes out of the building on the head each single.
Oh, okay, yeah, somebody recently.
Right, it was actually across the street.
Yeah, maximum sign errors should not exceed five square feet. And you count each side.
Each side, that's what you count as the five feet.
So the sign can only be about this big?
Side of the sign is two and a half by two and a half. And there's no way you can see that sign. And if they want to go for a variance, I thought it was another $50, but it's $350.
$58.
$58.
Are you in town center? So if you wanted to put a new sign, this is about the size of the sign that you would be able to get, right?
Well, you see the sign that I have with me? Well, I don't.
Yeah.
Well, bigger than that. I would go for a variance. And the logic was, a couple of questions. One was, there's two names on the sign. So we could have done with a little don't, and we put out two signs. We just suggested we just put one and then go back.
Think, would you RO those, John? Pardon? You were RO, that was before the TC was even.
Are you in the town center?
I think I would be now, but. I think you're still RO.
He was talking hanging, the hanging signs.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah.
Chip, didn't we make the ones that hang the posts in the front jacks, wasn't that made bigger recently? I thought that.
For RO, wasn't it?
For RO, okay, not 10 some.
Again, it's just another layer of something where you can't read that sign down the street. They're so small. And to get it to where you can read it, you pay another $358. And first you get your sign permit, which is what, 15 or?
It's 21 per side.
21 per side.
Wasn't so easy, so you're.
First they have to come to the historic district.
First they have to come to the historic district, right.
So they pay, they pay money for the historic?
They pay for the historic district, get the permit for the sign, realize that they can, they want a bigger sign, pay another $358 for a variance. It's too much for a new business to come in and just to put a sign out so people know they're there. I just think it's too much.
What size sign are you thinking, want to propose and we'll send it to the planning commission and ask them?
We have to rewrite the language off Gene's, he'll require writing.
Yeah, I know when I was talking to Gene, when we read, she read that through with me on the phone. So she was saying, you know, she had some thoughts and ideas as well. So I just think maybe if they get together and they want to bring back something to us, maybe, or? But I just think the two and a half per side is really small.
You just don't want to go too big in town because then you end up one block and the next one. But I think it'd be a little bit bigger.
Yeah.
And that way you don't have to get the variance.
Exactly.
I think that's the biggest thing here, you don't want them to have to get a variance. If they're getting variance.
Okay, it's over here.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I was going to say, because if the, if the whole sign frame is still there, they're not making sure that it's working, because it's only the whole thing is due.
Right, yeah, and theirs was, so they did go to the historic.
Because they're not moving the content of the sign, just so you are affected.
Right, right.
So what do you recommend?
I recommend Gene and Terry, and I'd like, you know, see what they think.
Bring it back to us.
And Chip, bring back something to us.
You got that, Luke?
You'll be able to read when driving down.
They're going to come back to you with what they're proposing. Then if it's okay, they'll think of the planning commission.
Yeah.
Very good.
I was just telling the mayor that if we made this change and someone decided that they wanted to get the bigger side, I don't think they should have come and debated or pleaded. That's something that we're changing. And they already paid the fee once, you understand what I'm saying? I'm just saying.
It's not a policy thing. I mean, when somebody refaces a sign, it's, you're not sure if that's, that's an ordinance that they pay a, yeah, they pay a fee, $21 a side, and they reface it. Even like the cabinet's there, and they change business. Somebody comes in, they put a different name in, you're charged for that.
What's the $358?
$358, if you get a variance, that pays legal fees, advertising paper, and the automated returns. And it doesn't even cover all that.
Okay. Well, let's go into the next item on the agenda, which is the discussion of the election ordinance. Over a year ago, we had John start working on our election section of our charter, and he came up with an outline for us on a lot of miscellaneous items for us to review. But I think that Michelle met with the election board to do a wrap-up yesterday with how the election went in May. And there was a few items that was discussed, and I think the most, the two items that really came out that the election board felt that we need to address is, one, the date of the election, and two, deadline the file as a candidate. Probably more so than anything, these were the two glowing things that we need to touch base on. I think for well over a year, we talked about the date. And then we, you know, if we're going to do a date change, we need to start that process soon. So it'll be accepted and adopted and ready to go. There's already some interest in positions, so there's going to be, we're in my position, I want to say, that we want to make sure that everyone has to write, plan under the same rules, let's put it that way. So one of the things that was brought up even when John did the outline was the date. And we talked about the date, we talked about maybe trying to move it along with the primary with the county. We figured that that wasn't going to work, we went back and forth. So the date that is kind of coming up from the election board as well as, I think what John put in his outline was the second Tuesday in May.
For the election?
For the election. So going from, currently our election date is the fourth Tuesday in May, which could fall the day after Memorial Day. It could be the week before Memorial Day. But we felt the best date could be moving it to the second Tuesday in May. I don't see any conflicts with that date.
The thing that was, no one knew exactly when we were running, what someone was giving. Well, I thought that election was already open when everybody was running for the primary. They thought, we had already been elected or wasn't elected. I mean, that would give us a confusion for that, if they were having a big thing with that date change.
By changing the date or?
No. By us changing the date, I think would be a little bit more reasonable.
The primary was April, April 28th, I think, is when.
That's what Earl was saying, if the date when we ran was different, it wouldn't have been as confusing because we went to a lot of houses and they weren't understanding that we were running. They thought that the election was over with the county, like.
Yeah, the county election, I think, was on, for some reason, I'm thinking April 28th was the date of the primary this past year. So we're actually pushing it, we would be pushing it closer to the county primary date. Is that good, bad, or indifferent?
I'm just wondering, you're right, because that was going to be the same thing I just said. How can you make a distinction between what's going on in the town and what's going on someplace else without people being confused?
Well, we not. At first it said, I voted, but you asked me.
No, is that what they said?
I voted, you asked me.
I think we have, we should change it from the Memorial Day celebration.
I think so too. I have more people just forget because this is Memorial Day.
So I'll make a proposal for the meeting next Wednesday to change the date to the second Tuesday in May. So give us some thought. Between now and next Wednesday.
What's the deadline to file?
Yes, and that, and we're going to add that to a two. The, the, now, well, the deadline to file currently is thirty days. So the way that it works in our, in our charter today is that, uh, if our election was on the fourth, fourth, uh, actually, it's less than thirty days.
Right.
It's less, it's two weeks. So currently, our, uh, way our election is today is if the election is on May twenty-eighth, the filing deadline is May fourteenth. And it doesn't give us enough time to do the ballots. If there was a, for example, let's say that we made a mistake on the ballot and it got printed. There's not enough time to, to, uh, recover from that. I mean, we could be putting the wrong information out. I think the, uh, staff and the election board liked anywhere from six to eight weeks was a good window, and I'm thinking sixty days would be fine. So if our election is on, if our election was on, uh, May the fourteenth, then the filing deadline would be then on March the fourteenth. Is that?
I, I agree with the sixty days. I really do.
So Lou will add that in the suggestion for a charter change next week. I think those were the two pressing issues. There's a lot of, there's a lot more information in here about the financing. Uh, I kind of feel like we keep our financing the way it is today, the way, if we follow the state's, uh, recommendations on the financing, and, and we have to apply for the, for the, for the, uh, state, we're being controlled by a whole different entity that they never let you out of the system.
Earl, did you ever experience that, Joseph?
And I did, too.
Yeah, my suggestion would be in those last two sections, the last two sections, in the financing one, we need everything that's there, and simply make reference to the finance disclosure that candidates, or those candidates have to go out, and put that in there, make that, or read that in there. Because I already do that. And then, what was the other one, it was, uh, penalties?
Yes.
That must be, I believe, uh, probably that is entirely a substitute, something that still makes sense.
Okay.
You know, I would like, um, interject as well, as opposed to next week, the two changes being made, these were the, the changes that we had talked about last night. So we have several, and they weren't in its entirety, and the election board has their own copies that they're going to be reviewing and putting, but we were asking that the board also review it in the end. So if okay, maybe a couple of meetings out so that we would have yours in its entirety.
I'm okay. I'm okay with that, but we can't let it drag.
A month, maybe?
Okay, I'm good with that. But, well, if these, if these proposed changes, uh, the board votes in favor of them, I would pray for a resolution to, for a charter change. Then it has to, then it come back to the board if they follow the meeting. You don't have to have a public hearing to change it.
Perfect.
But once we have to know the meeting, obviously, and you pass that resolution, and then it goes, it's posted for fifty days, and then at the end of fifty days, it becomes effective.
Perfect.
So that's how a resolution would change a charter.
So the, the two main things that I think that I've always been worried about was the date and, and the amount of time. So whatever additional changes that, that the election board recommends, or another resolution. Perfect. Okay.
We can, we can make those changes, because, uh, here, we make that pretty probable. I think the, what we did is, did those board members vote, and say, we need that one. That, that's the part that's going to drive them.
Is there consensus that these are acceptable?
I, I have consensus, I.
Now, the reason I say that is because I could be prepared with a resolution at the next meeting. So if the board votes for it, you can introduce the resolution at that time, without waiting the next meeting, because these are relatively sensible changes.
I'll be in favor of what you just said, Louis.
There you go. And then we could still make the, the additional changes. And I think that these are the key things that, uh, need to be out there.
Very good. Just for a correction, this was really just intended to consolidate what was sort of meshed all through, who, kind of pretty consolidated in a place where, where you know what, what the rules were regarding elections, everything, the election function, and that's where it was. Before, it just sort of evolved, and considered, and it's there, it's just kind of spread out.
Very good. Well, those were the three things that were on the agenda, but there was a couple other things that came up afterwards, uh, that I wanted to touch base on while I had the time. One was, uh, I've had, uh, one individual that loves to walk Meadow Park, and he's kind of our watchdog down there, and, uh, he stressed to me that on multiple occasions, he has seen Delaware-tagged cars dumping household trash into the dumpsters. And, uh, I don't know if we'd ever be able to, I'm going to say, police that. It's going to happen, when it happens, there's going to be, uh, cars, it's going to go around and, and throw their, if they want to be a criminal, they're going to be a criminal, let's put it that way. But maybe, uh, we could take a look at, uh, the containers that we have down there. I don't know, because, would it make sense to have containers where you can only put smaller bags of trash, or do you think that they would still dump their trash outside the trash can? You know, these are the things that, that, that I don't know the answer to.
I always say, way back before you all were born, Mary and Pleasner, they had a, uh, problem in the big old wall where people would come in at night and dump trash in the dumpsters that belonged to the businesses back there, you know, behind the academy and all that. And, um, I guess a few of the business owners got smart, and they said, okay, we'll lock, we had to lock them, so we could put our stuff in and lock them. Well, of course, we control that, and what people did was dump the trash, one the dumpsters or the ground next to them. So, I mean, it really kicked back on, and then they had to go and clean it all up and everything, so they kind of just left it up and just kind of say. Is it to catch people actually coming in there, and two seconds, they could just throw a bag of trash?
Would it, would it make sense that if we, I, I don't even know if it's posted down there that says, please note what happened. If, if it was posted in some way, and then if anyone saw those cars with that Delaware tag, or, you know, out-of-state tag, or even a Maryland tag, uh, uh.
Probably from Turbine.
Well, it, see, that's, that's the challenging part, they could be town residents.
That's right. I dealt with that around.
Because they had.
They got smaller trash facilities, like in, in the townhouses, they, they may, they don't have the.
How can you catch them?
There could be out-of-town people in that area that don't have trash collectives.
Well, Lou, maybe you could order those warning for us.
Yeah, drag them, put them posted, posted.
Yeah, like, you are on video.
Kind of abstaining.
So therefore, any illegal dumping of trash, you will be prosecuted.
This is a little remote, and I was afraid the high school may thought that abandoned the community was dumping trash inside the dumpster, and they had the custodians to go through there one night, and they found his name, and so they leveled, tell him, I, I leveled, and they made that problem, of course, we're not able to track.
Well, maybe we're all close. That'd be perfect.
You have to have a volunteer to take care of your trash, but that's exactly how we stop it.
That's how you stop it.
That's how you stop it. Um, it's happened a lot in, in our family businesses, especially in Carlow.
And, and, well, help me understand what, how did you stop them, or how do you stop?
You're good trash.
And then you, you identify, and then you send them a letter, and then it ends?
It ends, that's correct. They're caught.
One of the things you have to consider here, and you can't premonitate the possibility is that there are people who rent pavilions or participate in events down there that aren't all from Elton, and it could be from Delaware, and they clean up afterwards and dump it in there. You know what I mean? Clean up the pavilions when they have, because they may have an event, a birthday party, and they rent, you can have people from, from Delaware easily be attend that, and then after that, they clean up all the stuff, and then they put it in. In addition to somebody who would travel all the way up.
But even the next scenario, you go to the trash, you get three people, the two people that aren't, can justify themselves by saying, we had the place rented, that's why you saw them in there.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so we could, uh, we just won't stay out there.
But first you have to, you have to do something.
I think we got to do something.
Illegal, there's trash.
Very good. Okay, uh, I wanted to find out what the board felt about, you know, I mentioned at one of the meetings about, uh, uh, challenging the businesses on Bridge Street to light them up, uh, when it comes to Christmas this year. How does the board feel that we, uh, did the decorating contest, brought it back? I think that's something that this board, this board did in the past. Was there any good, bad, or bad feedback, good feedback?
I liked it, too. Now, we went to somebody's house one night.
We went to all the houses. We, actually, we made use of the town trailer. Um, and, because he had it decorated already for the Northeast Parade, and this, and we got on the back of the trailer, and we go through the neighborhoods and choose our, the house.
Your way, boy, out of our insurance, uh, knew we were traveling with unrestrained belt on your, kind of trailer.
We put a belt around this.
Yeah. Yeah, we were.
But the rest is still in this.
But, no, we put it out there, we did.
Where'd you put it?
Um, we, we put it, we had it.
I don't like to know about it either.
It was in some type of meeting, because there were quite a number of people who actually participated.
Now, we've never done businesses, if you wanted to change it, to, to bring in the bridge, bridge.
I think we, I think that we, we have, one is for business, and one is for residential. We want to get this spirit going, so it'll be a contest, you can be in the residential side and the business side, and, uh, we want to, we want to see you light these things up. And, uh, if the board's okay with that, we'll announce it Wednesday night, maybe we'll come up with some parameters on it, and, uh.
Let's see, you talk about holiday season.
Holiday season decoration for.
Not Christmas, holiday.
For the Christmas season.
Do you want to say Christmas?
Yes, I do, I do, too.
Because there'd be other people that.
Holiday season is fine.
That would have other religious, you know, thing. Be careful in your government.
I'm mixed, and I can do this.
Very good, well, yes.
Could we, like, also maybe follow up with letters to all businesses?
Yes.
Say, thank you for your participation, because a lot of times, they might go out of their way to do it, and then they're like, why didn't you hear enough of that one? You know what I mean?
That's great news.
Just to make sure we follow up with a thank.
I agree a hundred percent with that. And, uh, the last item that I had on my little agenda here was, uh, we're, we're the ongoing, uh, water and sewer side of the town. It's, it's always, uh, uh, you know, at our last meeting, we had a couple residents come in and, and talked a little bit about the, you know, utility bill, and, and they call it a water bill. So we all know that when they see that bill, it's known as a water bill, not a utility bill, even though it's a utility bill, we know it isn't. As we start doing our planning for this, I, I can tell you, I'm all in in moving forward with this networking of meters and making all this happen, and we, we're going through the process of getting the quotes and the bids and, and understanding, can our towers handle all this networking of these meters? And we're looking at probably six to seven thousand meters if we did a, a total change out of these things. But I think, uh, when we develop a plan, this thing cannot take us, we, we do not want this thing to be a three- or four-year process. We want this thing to be, uh, a ninety-day, and it sounds like, how are we going to change all these meters out in ninety days? We're going to be able to figure that out. But I also, like, I guess where I'm getting to is I think that we need to start preparing ourselves and having, maybe take a look at maybe having our own water sewer division of our town. I know that we have, uh, I think it's Mark Turnbull handles our water and sewer side of things. I just think that we need to have more bodies that are focused in on the water and sewer department, rather than having public works guys that go from point A to point B if there's an emergency, you know, pull them off the sidewalk committee to go help with this, and, and, uh, I, it's something that I should have probably put into the budget, uh, about adding more people into that division, but I think it's something that I'd really like for us to consider. And, uh, give it some thought, maybe ask, I'm asking the board maybe to get some feedback from Lou and Steve and Dan Hanley and Mark Turnbull, and, uh, ask them what, if, if, if there is a need to ex, make a, make a water department. I believe there is, and I can see if we can get these individuals on board now, it's going to make things so much smoother when we do this transition.
And so are you saying, Ron, um, like, the finance, financial part of it as well? The billing and everything, so the financial department would just be doing finance or administration?
Well, here's, here's, and I, and I'm going to, I'm going to call out Steve Recol right here. I'm calling you out right now. Here you have the CFO of our company. He's the CFO of the town of Elton, right? He's the CFO.
Actually, you are.
Well, I am, all right, I'm the CFO of our company. I actually, but we know who the CFO of the, of the town of Elton is. I can't understand, if, there's, there's no way that Steve under, knows these questions about water and, water meters and water. It's hard. Can you give me some feedback, or maybe I'm wrong? Maybe I'm wrong.
Well, we, we, so, for quite a while, we'd be served by a couple people dedicated to the finance office that is currently set up, to do the field work, which we currently do not have. There's no one dedicated to finance office. Uh, we've been working with, uh, part-time, um, public works as they can free up people. The deeper we get into this, uh, between the meters, and the, we replaced, uh, this, this morning, I, I passed a letter, we sent out to people, the follow-up, we got to Blue Bush, we can't read the remote, and it's difficult to follow, uh, for me to replace and, uh, we're moving, shall we, uh, uh, reread, it's just, there's just so much field work that, you know, that's where we're really lacking at this point, the field work, man, and where.
And it's hard, and I want to say, it's hard for me to ask you to be involved in those actions when I'm asking you to invest seventeen million dollars of the town money and other.
Well, yeah.
I mean, it sounds kind of crazy, but there's other priorities here, too.
Right, we fully understand what, you know, all hands on deck, when there's no, you removed, and so and so forth, there's a meeting that's broken, but, uh, you know, we really think we could fully employ, have someone, or some people dedicated to, you know, work upon getting your assets. And, uh, we, we currently do not have that.
Like Trish worked for.
Severn Trent.
Like years ago, she used to press, and it was, it was whatever. So you want that?
Uh, I'm not necessarily saying that Severn Trent still wouldn't read our meter, but what we need is, is individuals that are dedicated to the water department and/or sewer department. Uh, we, I don't think that we have that. I don't think that we have the dedicated, uh, well, you know, using that word, all hands on deck, if there's a problem, it seems like, I, I, it could be any individual, and there's no continuity. Uh, there's nowhere, I want to say, where the buck stops here.
One of the problems that, and you touched on it earlier about, if, when we change over to these meters, and I'll be positive about changing over, the first thing you do is sit down with the field people to, to participate in it. We don't have anyone. You're going to get public works people that do numerous tasks, and instead of sending that there and start working on meters, they've got, they've got to have something going on that, that stops that whole process, every single guy interrupts it, that's frustrating, and this people get frustrated because they don't have the dedicated, you need more than one. All you got to do is hire one guy, he goes on family medical, he can just dump.
Yes.
So you need more than one person. But that's all they do. They don't go help with the sidewalk crew or pick up, uh, trash because somebody's short that day or down doing excavation work. That's what he, uh, Dan, I don't, I don't call Dan, because he's moving people around all the time, so basically, he has to move people around. So he's talking about having people that work for finance that appeal people. That's all they did, the answer to the.
I think we need, do you think? Maybe, maybe.
Absolutely. And we all, this is true in the win rate. Now, if you go to this transition, you're talking about thousands of meters, we're going to have to depend on somebody breaking loose here and there, or you're going to have to pay somebody a fortune to do this.
So give it, maybe the board can speak a little bit more with Lou and, and, uh, Dan, and I, I don't know how many people we're looking at, but I'd say we at least need two and.
Maybe four, or whatever, maybe.
Get our plan and get back. Very good. I'd love to have that, uh, suggestion. Anyone else have anything they want to bring up, uh, on this agenda?
Perception, I was in two different places, in the Northeast and in Elton. Perception, I was in two different places, in the Northeast and in Elton and out of nowhere, all of a sudden, you're hearing from these people at Elton employing, going to employ a police officer from Baltimore to come here to work, solve our problems. My natural, well, with them, Baltimore has its own problem, how the hell they going to send somebody here to help us? But that's, that's whatever.
We don't really think we're part of them.
No, they think of it in terms of borrowing.
Oh, oh, yeah, because they usually quit down there.
Well, right, they have their own problems and I guess Ross saw on the news where a cat was probably in Hollywood, mounted, that was on the news yesterday.
Five thousand dollars.
Borrowers.
Yeah. On the police department, I remember the bird is on the public, because I don't think it's a public, but we ever looked at it. It's, I just didn't know, anything ever discussed.
I don't think that was ever brought up. I know they're wearing desks, but I understand what you're saying.
And I certainly don't want to bring it up at a public meeting because it would back it up in public, you know. Sorry, girls. Somebody could say, "Hey, guess what, I heard they have, they like, they shot this."
It's just every day you hear something.
I hear, yeah, you hear this, like, how are we being-
The car ran into the three officers.
Yeah. Are we being proactive enough or something that we don't feel that we need to do? I, I just don't know. I wanted to put it out there.
It'd be a good discussion. Matthew's rule.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
I think it's a great discussion.
I do, too.
Just something that's been online on, can I have one? You have lots of you.
No, but I just add, I'm going to add another thing, even in the church meeting, like, people for some reason think we have cameras around there. I don't know.
Everywhere?
Everywhere, I guess, it's good.
You just look out of it and they're like-
There's no cameras here.
Well, I don't think, a lot of times when they have pictures from undercover, they show people, you know, that you were selling drugs, they just seem to think, well, if they got a picture of a guy selling drugs, they have to come from a camera, you could have something on your body, you could have something on your car.
The business is absent.
Right, that's what I'm saying, they don't understand that. I don't know, there's nothing you can add.
No, but you know, the task force can get permission to put cameras in, in certain areas, I mean, get warrants to do it. I wouldn't be aware of any of them, but I never think you'd do it.
We used to have cameras here that they used, but I don't know whether they do that now or not.
Well, they have cameras in this building.
Yeah, I didn't say that. I'm talking about that area.
I have one of those things, but I don't know, and I'm coming in on the panel, I mean, is there anything that we could do or maybe you do not want to do, to get it on that farmer's market? I'm really, oh, yeah, I can, I can speak to that if I could speak to more. Well, I didn't, I didn't know what the deal was or, but all I've ever heard is a lot of complaints that it was on, I see a lot of negativity at the market, I just thought.
I'd like to talk to you after the meeting.
Okay, well, see you there. Come on in.
Following with Rob, I'm going to tell you the very frank, I think wine brought a lot of negativity downtown last season and I'll just say that in general, whatever specific Rob wants to tag you, he can, but it wasn't good.
Well, that's not good here. He's doing so well at where he is now.
I think he is good.
He's not, no.
Listen, I think that we all would, would like to have a, a produce back at the farmer's market. The challenge that we had, and this is quite frankly, between, I wish I knew the other gentleman's name.
The cow town head.
The two guys that were competing for customer, there was multiple times that we had to call the police on those two.
I didn't, I didn't know that.
On those two guys.
Yeah.
And, and, and we, actually, I can tell you, Mary Jo and I, we get a little bit of a bad rap for this with removing, we never removed one, in fact, we encouraged one to go in on the corner where the convenience store was and he said he was doing it.
Yep, he was headed to the health department.
He said he was moving on that corner and we were very supportive of having an indoor produce. We said, "Juan, if it's you by yourself, you can put it here around the corner, do, I'm doing it, I'm doing it." He never did.
He never bothered through.
But, anyone else have anything?
When you get in the plane, my mom will keep it rolling.
I know, I'm getting late. Sitting there, ran him out of town.
I didn't hear that.
Anything else? Very good, this meeting's adjourned.